Okay. So we're kicking off. The Policy Subcommittee. Meeting. Focused on Sections C and D. On Thursday, the twenty-third. Leo texted real early this morning because he got stuck in Austin. So Leo's not going to join. I thought we would do, I just, we just said it was run through these. Ask Leo to. Watch the video and then if he has other input for you, Jim, we can share that before you send it over. But we thought it was worthwhile to go, to go through that. And Michael, we asked you, so some of these, obviously, Michael and Jeff. As we get into C and D, some of these are processes you know. We have them in place. Let us know where there might be, you know, issues, concerns, flags.
So the one I'm looking at that has been your highlights. Is that the one we're going through, Jim?
No, well, the. So you'll go to CA. Administration Goals.
I'm looking at Section C. Starts with C A.
But is it index or the section?
It's a PDF section, this Section C.
Are you looking at the Zoom screen?
No, I'm looking at.
Okay. Alright, so the first file, CA, is a highlight in the second line?
Yeah, school system?
Yeah. So one of the things we agreed to during the beginning of this process is school system. We're taking out and making it school district. And then the next highlight, the last line. His, her. We've been changing the pronouns to non-specifics, so in that case it would be assigned to their area. So that's kind of like something we've gone through.
So you've done the highlights.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
And then we see the note there, and that was the change. But. Or as far as what's the other content, other than grammar? So, and so forth. This is all Medfields right now, Administration Goals. It's generic enough not to impinge upon, like, the evaluation goal setting process. So we didn't see, it was a conflict, we have to make any other changes to it.
I just may have a couple notes. That I may just add here and there. Go ahead. Yeah, I'm taking, there is any public comment either with yourself, Chris, or. I don't think anyone else is on the Zoom. No, this is good, I was, without the right response, I think, even with this, I think it's good for everybody to see this. Live, and we've. This process, I've said it over and over. We need to get through two or three of these. Four are all. Even myself, who's just going to drive me uncomfortable with it. So one, just going to Jeff to your question, and then we'll get to that, too. What Jim is generally doing is taking our policy and the M A S C model policy. Trying to merge the doc with his recommendations, and I forget what we're posting typically then. We will do the most generic. You know. Pronouns.
The media changes that you might.
Call out. In a direction. As much as possible. Can you say it? We know we're gonna. Table some. And that will fall after this process, because we want to make sure we can.
But so. As Jim makes his remarks today. Then he would send that to us usually, then a week or two. We then bring that to the school committee. As a review. So the step one is bring it in there for everybody. Review it. Talking about it, it's not a first reading. And then we do effectively first reading. And potentially a second reading into a vote, calling it a vote. Terms and use. Approve it in form, meaning the committee's okay with the changes, but it's not. Your current manual is still a force. Because we don't, what we don't want is to create confusion in the district of having. Part of this manual adopted, but there are still parts of the old manual still in effect. So whatever policies you have right now, it'd be effective until the end of the review. So to answer your question, tonight would be for information. Here's the information we'll talk about at the next minute. Yes, well, three if needed. Because if there's no further questions or comments after reading two, you could. Approve it in form. You still have one more opportunity at the end. When the vote, when the request will be to adopt it. That there could be discussion or even last minute changes. So that's first reading, second reading, we're okay with this section now. And then third reading is at the very end. When the actual adoption vote occurs. So there's still three bites of the apple, so to speak. Include, but not including what happens here. Yeah, yeah. The terminology. Yeah. Here's the word, review it. First read is the next, where you would actually have on the agenda for discussion. And then the next meeting would be. Vote to approve, and that means, basically, as you said, we're okay with the changes. What's next?
So, and the thing that I thought of, I would like, it's great to have my left and my right. Giving input. There are some, even as the committee reviews these things, these policies. There are some things where we might say, why did we do that? And I may not know history, and you're right, there's a lot of policies we're going through. Um. Correct. I, I'm looking at it as, my role is not to go back to what we discovered last week, sixteen sixty-six. When we started this policy, there may have been some decisions that could have been for the right or wrong reason. That we're living with, and it's working okay. Right, so the direction I'm gonna. Just, you know, my own, others decided. I, I, if we go through every one of them, why did we do this? And, you know, every change, so it's an enormous amount of conversation. I believe this will be a process that will eventually give up. So it's a matter of trying to be, you know, where is there risk? Exposure, or, you know. It's just the spirit. I use it to lift what we have. Digitize it. First, as much as we can. Modernize. And definitely call out that, but I, I recognize. I could study one policy and say, what happened in nineteen seventy-eight? You know, when they changed it. You know, Jim, you've done this in other, you know, hundred-plus districts. I think that's maybe where we can get. Stock. Um. You know, and maybe for the right reasons, just something to be aware of. It's, it's, it's gonna be overwhelming. Amount of creating a review. Especially actually for new committee members.
I was just wondering, as I go through some of the cases. Has it been done in districts in the. System, should we do with pupils and college students?
Well, we've been, most of the time, children, they don't say pupils. So where it says.
Children, we've been changing it to students.
I mean. I see it popping up. We have a little. These people are a lot.
Right. That would be a fairly simple global find replacement. Is that one, something that, it's like.
In this whole section, there were two incidents. When they changed. And the other thing. Tim, Jeff. What we've been trying to do is if something. It was a major change, like at the top of the page, writing a little note as to. Why this change is being recommended. And that obviously wouldn't stay on the final document, but it's. It's more as a memory aid for Tim. As you go through this process and having conversations. Mini, in that, like.
Well, what was wrong with Medfield, why do I go to this one? Or why is this one, you don't have one, or whatever the case might be.
And I'm just being open to, I guarantee, some people watch that, and I'll say, gee, I'm not, I don't necessarily remember which one I'm doing it with, Leo. And I may have to say, what was the driver for that? So I think it is what it is, right? I think this is a challenge process, but we all know, there's light at the end of the tunnel, I think. Everything digitized will be fantastic. We are tabling the. The minutes from last time, but we, we actually did add what's red, what's yellow, what's blue. So that is consistent throughout, and I think it's either.
No, it's red, red, blue and black. Red is existing language that's being deleted. Black is existing language that's not being changed, and blue is new language.
So, so my thought, it may not be for tonight, but the next week, just create a one here. That sits across us, the most basic. Just so everybody knows what we're doing, and because, you know, Lord knows what, what, what happens. And I've got a nice digital aid on my whiteboard. It just helps. It's like a double.
Alright. Okay. So as we talked about CA, we're only making the recommendation for those two changes, you see them highlighted there. And you see the explanation at the bottom of the page. Moving on, File CB is a policy you do not currently have in your manual. It's just generally, you know, making sure that people understand it's the school to be that appoints a superintendent. And what, what the legal references are for that. So in the draft two, this will show up in the loop. Uh, CBA is the job description position. Generally speaking, we don't encourage job descriptions to be posted into the policy manual. But if you were going to have one, this would be the one you would have. My question is that, when was the last time this was reviewed, because it doesn't have. A date? And the other question that came up from. Our attorneys on the last page. Where it says terms of employment. Says twelve months per year salary to rearrange. Right?
My initial.
But the question was that, because you have, is it, does it limit? Your ability to have a contract longer than twelve months? Because you put it under the terms of employment?
I mean, I.
But my argument was because it says per year.
Twelve months per year. It could say as opposed to an eight-month, you know.
Right. Or a hundred and twenty days, or.
Yeah. So my, I would circle back, this is the fine balance of. Generally, you don't have it, if you do have it, it's one more thing you have to constantly, you know, check and balance that might. Might revert.
Because, you know, I'll be honest with you, a lot of the stuff that's in here is probably within the language of your contract, to begin with. As far as, you know, performance responsibilities. Requirements. You know, the qualifications piece, maintaining a license. An educator license. So this would be, you know, it's not required that you have this in your policy manual. And I said, if you did have judge, if you did, this would be the only one you would put there.
Yeah, just mark it, mark for discussion, my personal recommendation would be not have it. But I don't want to. You know, I think that's something that sets up well discussion.
But it's important to remember that job descriptions are public documents anyway.
Correct. Yeah. We have it somewhere else, and put a link to where it is, because that's where it would be getting updated.
Well, the other thing, too, is you can go back to CB and say that, you know, the job description of the superintendent is supposed to be available, will be on file with the superintendent's office.
Yeah, I would think that would. That would be my, that's why I'd rather put it out in discussion, because I don't want to make that suit and on that happen.
But, I mean, it's three pages, but in digital format, it's miniscule. So it's not even saving pages.
That's not what I'm focused on, I'm just focused on, then it's one part, if something changes, if somebody inadvertently does it. Changes this, then it's one.
I feel more comfortable if this had a date on it. So you know how relevant this has been, I mean, was this in place when Jeff was hired? Has it been updated? Was it updated right before Jeff was hired? This isn't reflective of the mostly, most recent, and that's, that's my concern, is it not date? I don't have a date of reference.
Let's put a note. But that's, that's, hey, just put out, put out there as, as for discussion. You know, Jim, maybe, maybe you comment a little later. Generally, we don't. You know, see. Job descriptions.
Right.
Is there, you know. Specific reason it. It is, and that, you know, it needs to be included. And I, I don't know if you guys have any. And guessing, not a strong opinion one way or the other. Read body language. But it's. I don't feel strong. For up to me, I say, break it.
Uh, next one up is File CBD Superintendent's Contract. If you look at the, like on my screen, side by side. The. Medfield language talks about the initial contract, not about any subsequent contracts, whereas the M A S C template policy talks about. You know, may choose to negotiate a successor contract with the incumbent superintendent, that's not part of. The Medfield one, so it's just an expansion. Of what it's all about.
That would, that would make sense. I mean, is there any reason?
No, but by putting it down, it's, it's kind of like one of those things that. We get a lot of questions sometimes from really elected members, it's, you know, can we, can we keep the covered, how does that work? Yeah, just try to create a reference to it.
Yeah.
And a lot of people don't realize that you can extend the superintendent's contract to six years. There's a lot of laws. Okay?
Okay, memory.
Uh, CBI, Evaluation Superintendent. The, uh, the Medfield also does not take into account the valuation. Educator evaluation regulations that Desi has in place. That's why I'm recommending you go with the updated version. Is it, it takes those into account, and as well as the process for establishing the protocols. And goals that the superintendent be evaluated on annually, or by annually, whichever you decide.
I'm just reading it for a second. I just didn't see where is it referenced that. Yeah, I think that's good. Makes sense to me.
Right. Is it, who, Josh talks about the. The, um. Goals and standards, and that's the part that's missing out here. That part. As well as this part, the last line, too, is missing.
Yeah, just a reminder.
Uh, File CC Administrative Organizational Plan. Sometimes we see an organizational chart inserted in here. That's something.
Um, yeah, I would leave it, I mean, my thought is.
Yeah, it's, it's fine the way it is.
And I was confused, it's on the right, we don't.
It's different. Yeah. The CCP file line of staff relations, the only difference between Medfield one and the SCSC is school district. Otherwise, they're identical.
Okay.
That's the only change. CE. The only. The only changes between the model policy and the Medfield policy is the pronouns. And then the school. So you see those changes. Otherwise, the specific content is identical. Any questions?
No, I'm just, I'm confused why, like, I see CE on the left and CF on the right.
Two different policies.
Understood, okay. And when the areas were there, pretty much identical except for.
I don't, there's no reason to put.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, just identify what's different.
Got it, okay. I shouldn't have.
Because if I, if I didn't do that, then you could get two policies that look different between these things. And in fact, that's three minor edits.
Yeah.
In some cases.
Yeah, so you want to have a conversation.
Like the one about the evaluation. Substantial differences. Um. Okay, CF. Um. The, uh, school building administration, this is referring to, which is interesting, because. Acting with the approval and advice of superintendent. Principals shall be chief administrator of their school. So we just did the pronoun updates. And this is general procedures. We had talked also, uh. Previously, that state agencies. Issue regulations, admin, school administration issues procedures, so let's hollow it out. Okay?
Yes.
Alright. Um. CF dash R, I'm not quite sure why. This would be in here, this to me is much more on. To establish between the relationship between superintendent and building principals. Not necessarily through policy.
Categorize it unless you say otherwise, too. You know, is there, is there any, is there any bad thing that happened because we do that? Or is that, is that consistent how we operate anyways? It is, yeah, it is, I would say, it's just, I don't really really want to. Revisit it.
So keep it, or take it out? Okay. Make some changes in here. And I'll come back and make these. Don't want to waste time here doing it. Just highlight it so I see it.
The only downside would be if your, you know, your appointment agreements with them. Change, or, you know, we would need to make sure that's in there. I don't, I think it's fine.
What do you think about the second number two, Jeff? The word wisdom.
Yeah, I mean, that's. Interesting.
The principle is in doubt as to the wisdom of the proposed action. About, we take wisdom and say success. Is in doubt as to the success of the proposed action. Alright.
Then you can open it up. There's success, but then there's impact, it creates great success. It creates total chaos. Impact, and, you know, potential impact and success. And that's, that's, that's where we're getting into this. I'm not doing that, Jeff.
Oh, I didn't get that.
Yeah, and I'm not asking for a document, and I'm sure it's implied for success.
Okay, uh, policy implementation, CH, again, other than changing. Procedures and school systems, I mean, regulations, procedures and school systems, the school district. Those are the only changes between the template and Medfields. Um, and here, I did this just to kind of make it a little bit easier for myself, but. Did the same policies, CHA, except one says procedures, one says regulations.
And we're moving everything else to procedures.
Okay, okay. So. When you see this as draft two, this is still gonna be black, except for. The word procedures, I like.
That's, that's what, that's what I, yeah, that helps, like, they want to make sure.
It's still yours, we just made that change.
So, and you're just not doing it now?
Yeah, because I don't want to waste time here, I'll do what I do to clean up before I say it. Uh, let me just do a quick note to myself.
Alright, I'm going into the second half. Trying to be courteous. If you guys are gonna make me.
I'll take one to go. I don't like getting crumbs in the keyboard. Um, CHB. School community review, this in case would be procedures. Um, we have this covered in Section G. Um. So. P, PHC. Um, so I don't know that we need it here as well, because this is the administration section, not the school committee section.
Yeah, I don't know why, you don't want to have the same policy two quizzes.
No. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna take it out, no, that is, uh. In Section G. So you'll see it. Alright. Um, then here, CHC. Just real quick. So you can see inside. Is again, they're identical policies, except someone is using the terminology procedures versus regulations. And just do this. As a reminder, why? Again, there will be a note that says, just, you know, nothing we changed and the rest of it will stay black. Um, okay, um, approval of, um, handbooks and directives. Um, do we, no, no. Um, the difference between the Medfield policy and the M S C policy is we don't have the first paragraph in ours. And then the school district and the pronoun stuff, but uh, while it's true, the law only requires handbooks to be in buildings, second, take grades as well. Every school has a handbook. Um, so what you could, so we don't have the first line, excuse me. We start this out with a principle in consultation with the school council shop. We take out the law and recs that needs school building.
How, um, okay, all right, that's where I was looking at them incorrectly.
So this would be from here over out and then did we agree to like capitalized like principle and stuff like that? I think we did, didn't we?
I'm not sure.
But that's really the reality is that every school has a handbook. So why are we calling them just grades?
Yes, of course.
Okay. Um, handbook directives, this was, um, put in policy manual way back when seventy-one thirty-seven H was approved, which has these five E E components that it was like, uh, you need to put these in handbooks. Well, these have been now in handbooks for almost twenty years. Eighteen, I think it was eighteen years ago that thirty-seven H was first. Um, and it's not in here as a policy. It's an exhibit dash E means it's like uh, supplemental material or an addendum. Um, so this is a longstanding practice language now with books. And I went back and looked at all the handbooks that were sent to us and it's in there. Um, in fact, it's been expanded now between now it's thirty-seven and a half and thirty-seven. Thirty-seven H and a half, thirty-seven H and three quarters. There's actually more than what's here. So this is outdated dramatically. So I would recommend you take it out of the manual because it's in your handbooks.
And you have as well as this, I'll take the thirty-seven H and three quarters and that change for the school practices and all that.
Right. The, the, the language, the changing language of our expulsion, you know, steps you have to go through in suspension cases. Parent, parent meetings, consultations.
I don't know, would, would the risk be, I mean, maybe the reason we have it is if some reason this, you know, you could, you came to us and said, we want this with that.
But you.
And we don't have a policy and we don't know better.
But the handbook you vote on.
We, yeah, we vote.
So it's policy anyway. Which you don't want is contradictory, which is what you have right now.
Yeah. So I'd support it.
So my note is going to be in conflict with handbook language. Because thirty-seven H and three quarters dramatically changed how students could be, the process you would have to go through to suspend a student, never mind expel. There's the, as Jeff said, you know, restorative practices, the whole bit. More proactive approach. Um, C H D, um, this is the one that kind of saved us um, during COVID. Um, is that there were a ton of decisions that had to be made in very short periods of time. And there was no mechanism for school committees to meet because it was before the emergency provisions with online meetings. So if you go back to March of twenty twenty and all the decisions had to be made about, uh, entering M O U's with the unions about changes in working conditions and, uh, teaching online, virtual learning, all that stuff that had to be done and you couldn't even meet. So a policy like this is what allows superintendent to go ahead and handle those situations. And then when you couldn't meet, back to you, you had to like explain everything. Quite a backup.
Yeah, I know it well.
Not that we want ever to have to go through that again, but that's the purpose of the, of having this policy. And again, the only change we're making in school system, school district.
Yeah. No, I'd say, you know, when we could meet, what was it like twice a week or three times a week during the summer.
Yeah, but that was during the summer. I mean, you had March to June, the emergency procedures were approved in June.
Yeah.
So March, end of March, all of April, all of May, it was crazy. I think it was May. Uh, next one up is C L. Um, it's administrative reports. Um, I don't like the way the first sentence is uh, structured in that the Medfield school committee will require reports from the superintendent concerning conditions of efficiency in these schools. Well, shouldn't that be when you want those reports, like you request reports? This is, you're putting a policy that requires you to do something.
I would think it, I would say, like, just say as.
No, I think the, well, you simply made the Medfield school committee, uh, uh, can request reports or, you know, that you initiate the request. Or change it, just say the superintendent will provide reports concerning the conditions to the school committee request. Just flip the.
Yes, I get it. Just take it will, make will, what make will may.
Okay.
Okay. Right. I, I don't, procedurally, I think we do it. Okay. You know, so I, and, um,
but that could simply be placing something on an agenda, like yeah, agenda next month, we want to talk about this. So there's a report, report or a presentation to address that.
And again, and then he can weigh.
School system, school district. Right. Um, and the last one is school district annual report. And again, school system, the school district. Um, my question. Uh, which report is this referring to? The two hundred and eighty-five that have to be submitted to DESI by the administration annually? Or is this the one you prepare, you printed in the town report? I.
I, the way it's, the way I read it is it's the
the town report, right, right. So I, to make sure that we clarify that, but it's the title, the school district annual town report or report to the towns. To make it clear what we're referring to. So there's no confusion.
But the commissioner of education, that sounds like all the ones.
Exactly.
Year report and all that.
Yeah, I agree with that, which is why I raised the question. Um, parents and citizens and others of the programs and conditions of the Medfield.
I raise this.
Just annual report or annual financial report or annual?
Is there, I mean, it's, it's more, it is more proprietary, all right. There's, there's data forms and everything else.
Okay. It's in the section C. You okay, Tim?
Yep. Maybe we should name something else, Jim. One of the ones, it's always budget manager.
You say name your report, the one you just sent out?
Oh, we're sending one out in April. I'm wondering if we should rename it based on this poll. You know, I didn't bring it up. My, my general thing, it doesn't, if it's an annual budget report and it contains other information, I think that's okay. You know, it's just. It's tricky, yeah. You could put something annual. I don't know what you.
Would be easier to rename. Um,
I'm just saying I don't want to confuse it with this policy because it's a document that says annual report. Yes, he took. We're gonna need like, so it, it, it's something different. And I don't see your screen right now, but do we call it annual town report?
I'm pulling it back up. I had, I had closed the file, so it shut up.
We can probably look at it.
Okay. So this is school district. How about if we did something like, um, I want to say report in your town report.
Is it, is it our report? Are you squeezing the responsibility to do the annual town report?
Well, I have the, they have the town or the title.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Um, and that's, I think that different, because you're calling it as the annual report. But it's not going to, it's, you're talking, this is talking about the, um, why don't we just say annual town report, take school district out of it? Because now it's, now you're actually referring to the, the, the little booklet, annual town report. And then it goes for the, say, we're covering, covering first fight activities in the school district. But it's more than just a financial. But I think that, that keeps them separate.
Okay.
Okay. Bye, bye. Go into section D?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, D A, the only recommended changes are school system, school district. Otherwise, we have no recommendations for the language.
I just wondered too, if that's, it may is not the place, but if that's the place to include the recommendations and their, their, their new financial.
Meaning like in number one, uh, advanced planning with staff, community involvement and staff, common community involvement.
Did they cover the Bible? Except they're more, so, um, first remember what it is? It's the town's financial goals. Um, I was gonna say finance, they call it financial policy, but they have like a they have a new policy that we need to get these particular targets. They've all budgeted like, like.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm going to see, I'm going to use cash, see that's why I'm playing with all those kinds of, I just wonder if that's, that takes place to include even, even in the source program.
To develop budgets into guiding expenditures as to achieve. How about it? Number two, to establish levels of funding that will provide high quality education and me, me. Um, town of Medfield's financial, established financial goals. Oh, I didn't do track ages, sorry. See. Just highlight that. But that's new. Is that me?
Would you? I think so.
Okay. What's that? Uh, D B, annual budget. Um, there's two versions of this, so I'm gonna pull them up side by side. What's the difference? First paragraph. School districts. Same requirements. Where'd you prepare it? Seventy-one thirty-four, seventy-one thirty-seven, seventy-one thirty-eight. And the only real difference is the first, first line, there's a second part of that and then that's one other thing. So school district versus school system. Is there a preference?
You, I mean, in that first paragraph, I, I think the and it's fine, like it's nice, it's, to me, it's nice to, you know, it's nice to have it assumed anyways. I don't wish you, I don't want to be consistent.
Those would be another one of those, it would be predominantly be black text, except for this one's fine.
Yeah, and I, and I.
And then school district. Okay. D B C, budget deadlines and schedules, um, I'm more apt to go with the existing. Medfield version of this. If those two bullets are correct. And is it still select? What's it gonna be? Is it two words or one?
That is two, was it? You have a little selection there. The next one, DBC said they only thought of it in the data version.
The law is December thirty-first, yeah, town charter is probably January. Okay. Uh, budget planning. First paragraph is different, other than that, we used to say. Yeah, it's just the first. That first introductory sentence into that first paragraph, major portion of income for the application of policies is derived from property taxes. And the school committee will attempt to protect that. Then the first priority in the development is the same. Okay.
Yeah, as far as I.
Again, it doesn't really necessarily affect that, the intent of the policy. And all things being equal, just stay with the current. Uh, communication of budget recommendations, budget hearings and reuse. Is this your practice? If it is. Ring tones like that scare me. It's like, the emergency alarm.
And I have no idea, sometimes it buzzes and sometimes it does.
Getting a nuclear test from the nuclear power plant, like, this is a test. Distributed. Distributed could include mailing. Distributed. Electronically distributed.
And then it would be, should be made available. But that, that's too.
Well, if you change it to distributed, you have the obvious option of amending that in the future.
You know, like, I, I just get way, I, I think our towns can get so far behind. Many, anyone, but it's like, you can choose to opt out your financial statement, so they distribute to you through email, it's, it's good. It uses that, so like, I think distributed electronically or through mail. You know, Ben, Ben would say you.
Or if you, if the, if you're not ready for the option part, and the way it is, you can change it when you want. Do you have, like, do you have a? Email for every resident? For people who sign up.
Yeah, what about posting online?
Well, that's kind of a document. It's kind of one of those generally public documents you put on your website. No, you just. Being made available.
And made available. Right, like, I'm okay, like, this could be maybe flag it for discussion, like, but to me, I, I think distributed. And made available, that's our practice, because you are putting it out there.
Do the voters or to residents? This says voters. Does it go to people or does it go to households? Maybe we should change the households. There you go.
Maybe just flag that as, you know, like, potential discussion. In some cases, we, we, you know, saying, hey, that just makes logical sense, I, I'm, I support it.
You talking about the remarks?
Something about, you know, we may not be residents, but. Okay, I, I almost wanted to just take it as remarks, then the only downside is it opens up to anybody. Not the same, yeah, yeah, the guardian may live somewhere else.
But if a guardian doesn't live here, they wouldn't vote on your budget. They wouldn't be.
I was looking at it differently, I, I mean, I wasn't saying, face it down, I was just saying, that, that prelude the guardians, millis. That, that's, that's the only way I was saying.
Well, I mean, as far as if it was somebody. If someone was a guardian, a student, or a school system, you wouldn't stop them from speaking.
So, I'm, I'm okay with it.
But I agree with voters, because not everybody registered. Right, um, budget adoption procedures. Uh, no re, no recommended changes for this at all. Are you going to representative time meeting or still? Okay. Uh, budget transfer authority. What we, what our policy does, it sets up the, um. Uh, cost centers. Um, in that, if a transfer is occurring within the cost center, the school committee doesn't need to approve that, but if it's between cost centers, they do. Yeah, and, and I think we talked about that before, it, it reflects the practice of the district. Uh, funding proposals and applications. S- school systems, school districts. The only thing I had was this third paragraph, um. Uh, the.
Proposals?
Submitted to the committee for approval? Or is it the acceptance, what's it's awarded? Yeah. Uh, that's what I thought. Need to change that. No, what I'm saying is that, just putting a period after the word, for submitting the proposals, that's the superintendent basis, you know, or the admin team submits proposals. And then if, if they're accepted. By the granting authority. The school committee would approve, accepting them in whatever caveats or. Uh, requirements come with it. Like the SRO. You good?
Yeah, and, and I was looking at the last paragraph, each, it's, it's, I, I, I think it's the same, it's, we're.
Yeah, it's just like, if the money, if you get a grant for a specific thing, then someone had the superintendent responsible, or ultimately responsible, somebody else may sign for it or designate. Um, that the money was spent for the reason in which it was allocated, like title one funds, was spent for title one services.
Yes, good.
Same thing with like revolving funds, that the money was expended for the fund which was created for. Uh. Revenues from federal tax sources, DEC. Um, there's two versions, it's a, kind of like a supplement versus a plan policy. Let me just put these up side by side, so you can see them. Um, the one on the right was developed because of the requirement for. A specific, you know, supplement policy, not supply. Um, but Medfield seems to do the exact same thing, and the, the language is very similar. Um, so I, I would, I'm very comfortable with the Medfield version of the policy, meets the requirements, actually goes a little bit beyond. The only thing you might want to do is switch the titles. So if, if, if a, if an agency is asking for your federal funds, supplement, not to play policy. Will they, will someone know that it's the revenues from federal tax sources policy?
That's important.
Right, right, yeah. So like, just call it what it is. Right, authorized signatures, um. Just want to make sure that, this is really specifically talking about payroll. Um, because of the time requirement. Often, is it the chair or designated? Okay. So. Well, the town treasurer raises checks, is they the treasurer for the school? If this was a regional school, we'd have that worded differently, in that the regional school treasurer, regional treasurer. Okay. Um, I'm just gonna swap to. There's an additional legal reference in ours. And it's already got the chair versus chairman, because that's what decision we made before too. And by saying the superintendent, we can say and or designate, that way it would cover both, both of you. Uh, DH, bonded school employees, and just changing it to school districts, the only change. Same thing with DEI, fiscal accounting reporting, changing it to school district in the first sentence. No other changes, you guys are good with it?
Yes.
All right. My one policy joke, the most appropriately quoted policy that we have. DIE. Not DEI, DIE. Again, the only thing we have is changing school systems, school district, to be consistent with the changes made before.
I, I'm just shocked, how many years have you been doing this?
Me, twenty-seven.
Only one?
Well, the rest of them are just not funny. Try making jokes about the policy. They're funny to me.
It's like top of dad jokes right there.
Uh, DJ, uh, purchasing. Uh, this just takes up the key and cheese stuff, that's in yours. School purchases, unofficial purchase, or the corporate samples, and such, except for maybe. Oh, yeah, and we take up pay cash. No such, no such. Okay, it's, again, we will, um. That's one change. Okay. Uh, DJA purchasing authority. No, absolutely no recommendations to change here, pretty straightforward. DJE, purchasing, better requirements, um, Medfield one is really outdated. So we're gonna just take this one out. The dollar amounts in the way they would. Never mind what they just went up. Um, so, yeah, procurement requirements, um. Isn't it just a? Didn't it change so a hundred thousand? Yeah.
There's a new, uh, guideline that if you're. Figuring anything that has to do with energy efficiency, did you see that one?
Yeah, yeah.
That you don't have to. Go out and get three quotes, as long as it's under three hundred thousand.
Right, right.
So they just have to try.
Yeah.
How often is it, where do you see that making an impact? I was just more kind of thinking, how often does that?
Well, for the energy efficiency one, let's say you want, you got a, a grant. Uh, to change all the lights in your school from to LEDs, right? That's going to be more than a hundred thousand dollars. Wobble.
Ever so.
Or you go to, yeah, the M A C program or something like that, right, right, so.
Okay.
Um, we have four pages left.
Yeah, thanks for coming.
Right. Yeah. But if you wanted to, like, if you had a, like, let's say you have a bunch of seventeen bins. Say you have a bunch of seventeen bins, and you want to change.
That's, that's, that's. So like right now, when.
So now you can do that with three quotes, up to three hundred thousand for energy efficiency. Right, so I put that line in. Um, D J G, vendor relations, this is really irrelevant. Um, this goes back to the time when people were door to door, they'd come to your school, show up at central office, this all happens electronically now.
Yeah, most of it, we still have a couple of them.
Yeah. I mean, you want to, you can keep this if you want, most places find this irrelevant. But if you think it would, it'll be of help that you, something you can point to. It's already in this or something.
Yeah. It's like, 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 but we still get.
Yep, yep. Um, D K, payment procedures, I have no recommendations for. Um, expense reimbursements, uh. Alright, so in the second paragraph, second line, rate company by the committee. They simply adopt the IRS rate? But why don't we just say that rate company by the internal revenue service, that way they don't have to keep voting. Because if they haven't actually voted to adopt the IRS rate, you gotta pay whatever the whole of the bus.
Uh, I'm just, I'm just picking up. It's actually not the IRS rate, that's the right.
Is it?
Yes, if you have a home, right. Can we rephrase? Yeah, right. There's a presentation.
Yeah, yeah.
And then we can be used to test it, right? I'm getting at that point.
No, I mean, we can just say the department of elementary, the raised.
Because they updated every, sometimes they updated every six months.
Does that apply if staff damage?
Yeah, we just do the same.
Okay.
Make these are powerful.
Yeah. Does anybody get a monthly stipend?
What?
Yeah. Well, it says will be paid to the superintendent, assistant superintendent, business manager, not authorized by the committee, who are required to travel regularly within the school district.
I'm saying annual.
Alright, but it's in contract? Alright, so we can just take that whole line on. I'll just put a note here. Contract. Okay, and, oh, this was just another version, so we're good to go. Um, legal references. Yep, same. And that is section D.
Cool, what was, um, just looking for, because I remember last year I was reviewing where you have all the different student accounts.
Student agency activity accounts, that's in section J.
J.
You have the graduating class.
We have it in our student activity policy.
Right. Okay, okay.
Yeah, we adopted all that.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, this is the one, I remember reviewing it previously, and I, I just, you know what, I defer to you. Um, meaning like, what, is there anything in there that's dated or not, you know, is operationally, is existent?
The graduated class, all like leftover money?
Right, yeah.
Yeah, the, uh, the department of revenue did a bunch of audits in student activity accounts, and they found that there was like. Funds set aside for the class of nineteen forty six. Or nineteen eighty, or it was like classes that graduated decades ago. Um, and. They felt that when a class graduates, whatever money's left in their account, they should make a decision before they actually participate in graduation. What to do with the extra money. So you either write a check to the class of twenty twenty three, and they deposited. And they are, they manage it, or, because you can't write it to. Uh, or, uh, they vote to do something.
Right, right, so, so we can give them up to their graduation to even.
But.
Move the money to a, and they can have that's out under my class of. Right, or they just, they, they support everything that they, they refer to them as.
Right, right, and then the other thing too is if they make no decision, they, it still sits there after a year, you have to have, like, what happens towards that. Yeah, yeah. Good.
And the other language that, um, that we have, they use the funnel, all issues.
Yeah, right. Yeah. Well.
Okay, so now that, I mean, that's when we get there. That was one, I, I was glad you were here. Um. So yes, we'll go through. Who we leave in.
Okay.
You know, I would think.
Do you have E and F yet? Did I send those to you?
I don't think so. And I, I'm okay. As I say, um. You know, this is fine, the way we did it is, if you sent it, I think we're posting it. Without necessarily the. You know, the minor changes you make, and that those we're reviewing now, so it's okay that we don't get those because.
Alright.
And I would think. Probably a month out. Right, I think going every two weeks is going to get bad logged into the. Our own process as well, my fear. Um, so we, she's attentive, while we have you here. April is the fourteenth, right?
I made the break.
Yeah, I see the preferences.
No, I made the break for a bigger calendar. I'm a big boy now. Uh, April.
Need to target the week, the tenth. Or the twenty fourth. I'd probably rather go the tenth, just in case we.
Is it the? What's a school vacation week?
It's seventeenth.
Okay. Yeah. Alright. So we can. Um. You still like the nine o'clock?
Yeah, if that's right, you, I don't know, it seems like it's, looks up fine.
Can't do Tuesday, I'm doing Boston Tuesday. Uh. Wednesday and Thursday are open. As it's Monday, the tenth. Easter Monday, if that means anything to you. So I could, I could do the ten, twelve, or thirteen.
Why don't we try the twelve? I'll check it later. You know, twelve, if not the thirteenth, but why don't we, ten, I would say the twelve.
Because.
And you're gonna do what, what section?
E and F.
And should we have? Other participants?
Um, section E includes, uh, food service. Um. It's kind of a blue point now, but the yield charge policies in section E. No one shines it for yields because they're free. Uh, transportation's in there. Uh. Pest management. The, uh, not facilities, but like. The pest, integrated pest management policies in there, then F is facilities, so that's gonna be like, uh, building and ground security. Uh, cameras, video cameras.
If you don't mind, yeah, it would be helpful just to make sure. I have a funny feeling that's gonna be pretty vanilla.
Um, it's a pretty straight, those two sections.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, those two, those two, uh, sections are pretty straightforward. Then we get into the ones after that. They start getting a little bit ahead of you. Uh, personnel, section G. I is the instructional program, J is students. Those are, I and J are the two heavy duty, heavy, big lifters that were all. A lot of the outdated or missing stuff was found in those two sections. G's personnel, H's negotiators.
You want one with G with.
Support services. You're gonna do E F G?
Yeah, for G.
You could try it. If we, even if we got a head start on G, we could get to the whole thing in two hours. Yeah, I can send all three.
Yeah, why don't we just say, I mean, have it sort of out there, and then if we, this is one more, it can also give you.
F will be really quick. Yeah, I'll get those two today.
Uh, okay, so let me just mark this too, is, I think, I'm not sure if there's anything else, or should I close out the meeting? Without leaving your noise, which we could. I would, I would, uh. Close out the meeting today.